Wanted those of you listening, those of you in attendance to be aware of that. So on that note, we'll call this meeting to order and may we have the roll call, please?
Counselor Baxter?
Present.
Counselor Bossmans?
Present.
Counselor Buell?
Here.
Pro Tem Youssef?
Here.
And Mayor Nozworthy?
Present. Do we have our translator?
We do, Mayor. That would be Sam Guzman.
Welcome. Let's do the introduction of our translation services. Thank you. We can't hear you. No, I don't think he's frozen. Tom, are you looking at this, trying to problem solve him?
Um, I, this is Nick here. I'm trying to, trying to see what I can do here to get him through, but we are, we're not, we're not hearing you, Sam.
Um, no, I just told the public, because there's people here to speak, I believe, that I went, didn't, will follow the agenda, which is public, but we may, what we can do, although I don't like to, I'll give it a minute more to try to solve this, we'll open the meeting and we'll come back to translation when we have it working. So, Tom, I'll give you about one more minute to see if you can solve this. Thank you. While we wait for the translation to be solved, I will start with my, my statement that I typically make at the start of study sessions and city councils about the acknowledgement of the land. This is my statement. It does not reflect the council or any other individual council member. So for thousands of years, this region was home to numerous people, bands, tribes, and nations. Each had their distinct culture, artistic expression, and community mores. In particular, this region was the ancestral home of the Nuchu, Dene, Pueblo, Hopi, multiple Apache bands, and various other tribes and Latinx people who used and stewarded this land. They recognized that indigenous peoples were forcibly removed from their ancestral lands by the US government. It is important to recognize that the narrative of this region has mostly been told from the dominant perspective without recognition of those who came before us and who to this day continue to thrive, create, and connect with this land. Thank you for your respect in acknowledging this legacy. Do we have a solution on the translation?
We do, Mayor. That's my bad. This is my first time doing it and I promoted him to an interpreter before he gave the announcement, so that's why we couldn't hear him.
No problem. It's always a learning experience. Thank you. Sam, I just read the land acknowledgement, but we will welcome your introduction of translation services. Yes, Sam, we're not able to hear you, so I'm gonna open it up. Yeah, I'm gonna open it up after, we're gonna go into public comment and still give him a chance. If, if at any point, Nick, you're able to solve this, that'd be great. You can interrupt.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's what I thought the issue was, but I guess not.
No worry. Um, public comment. Do we have anyone signed up? We'll start. Oh, yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I wasn't looking at the, I didn't even quite put my glasses fully on. Identification of actual or perceived conflict of interest. Does any council member have potential or perceived conflict of interest? Okay, none. Thank you. Now we'll go to public comment. Thank you. Let me read the instructions here just for a moment. So this section of the agenda is set aside for the public to provide three minutes of comments or ask questions regarding items that are not scheduled for a hearing or public testimony, or that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. City Council will not respond to questions from the dais. Citizens should address their comments directly to the city council. As this is a virtual meeting, the avenues for public participation have been adjusted. Please return, refer to the end of the agenda for additional information regarding, oh, excuse me, duh. All, all written comments received by the city clerk for noon today have been delivered to council and we will be summarized in the meetings. You'll have three minutes and hopefully the clock will be working, but if not, I will also look at the time on the wall and try to give you a heads up when you're about 30 seconds, but we do try to hold to that 33-minute comments. So the first person is Sweetie Marbury. Please come up and state if you're a resident of the city or the county.
My name is Sweetie Marbury, and yes, I have been a resident of the city of Durango for almost 50 years. There's three issues that brought me to council tonight. First of all, I'd like to say that I have lived next door to an ADU for almost 50 years and a duplex on the other side of me. I live in EN2. And I came tonight to say that I support the changes to the land use code concerning the ADU program and also the incentive program for ADUs. However, if you don't eliminate lot sizes in EN1, 2, and 3, you are not fair to the people that live there. The document stated there have only been less than 50 ADUs built over the period when we approved it in 2014. By approving ADUs, then there's equity for someone that lives in EN4. I live in EN2. If I, my lot size is 6,800, I'm left out of the equation. ADUs, as we all know, can help the workforce as well as helping the residents that own it. We have stunning guidelines from our departments set by ADUs that are recognized on a national level. I'm asking you to change and include eliminating all lot sizes in EN1, 2, and 3. ADUs have not wrecked historic neighborhoods. Second, I support pickleball at the Schneider Park and not at Fort Lewis Smith Fields. The construction at Schny, at Schneider would solve many problems for our community. It's a win-win situation. The third issue was a survey I saw just recently online about the lodger's tax. And I do support keeping the lodger's tax, but to say to me, "to be determined," what city council will do with the money was too vague. I have some suggestions, and I know you may be looking for suggestions. Maybe it would be building a police station with the department, or using the money to help local businesses that have not overcome the pandemic. Maybe housing incentives, incentives, a parking garage. I'm asking you to throw out suggestions for residents because we all like factual information before we make up our mind. To say "to be determined," that's too vague, and I could not support that. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. The next person we have signed up to speak is Joyce Cohen. And again, if you'll indicate if you live in the city or the county.
Good evening. Yes, my name is Joyce Cohen and I live in the county, and I'm here to talk to you tonight about puppy mills. And I'm, you've probably heard about atrocities that go on in puppy mills, and I'm not talking about responsible breeders that you may know. I'm talking about factory farms keeping thousands of dogs in horrific conditions. And you folks actually have the opportunity to join 11 towns in Colorado, five states, and over 400 other towns and cities across the country that have passed legislation banning the sale of puppies and kittens in pet stores. Pet stores are the ones that buy from puppy mills thereby perpetuating their existence. And you probably are saying, "Well, what does this have to do with Durango? We don't have any pet stores that sell puppies and kittens." But I cannot stress to you enough that the time to pass this ordinance is before a pet store wants to open and sell live animals. Once that happens, it's virtually impossible to get this legislation passed. The puppy mills are governed by the USDA, and I use the term "governed" very loosely. It's perfectly legal to keep animals in cages that are only six inches bigger than the animal. They never have to let them out of the cages. They never have to let them have interaction with humans or other animals. They don't get proper veterinary care. And when the animal is no longer good to them, which is usually after about five years, they can dispose of them in any way they want. I understand Durango has a celebrity dog that was actually rescued by a puppy mill who has no eyes, and that's because he had a disease in a puppy mill, and this is not uncommon. Furthermore, the animals are kept in such bad conditions, they produce sick puppies. The CDC recommends you do not buy animals from pet stores because of this. So this is not just an ethical treatment of animals issue. This is also a consumer protection issue. Selling, also, you know, I know Durango doesn't have puppy pet stores, but the more towns that pass this ordinance, the stronger the messages to the state that they should pass legislation on a statewide level. Selling dogs and cats retail is a dying model. 24 out of the 25 major pet store chains do not sell live animals. They help hold adoption events, which of course helps to reduce the number of cats and dogs in shelters. No responsible breeder sells to a pet store. And that doesn't mean that a person can't get their designer dogs anymore. They just have to go to the responsible breeder and not a pet store. You're not hurting breeders. You're only helping to shut down the puppy mill. Now, I work alone. I go to towns by myself, but the Humane Society and another organization called Harley's Dream support my efforts, and you will probably be getting a lot of information from them. And if, I know you guys can't answer, ask questions now, but if you're interested in pursuing this, I'm happy to come back on your agenda anytime you'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Werner Heber.
My name is Werner Heber, and I live at 131 Loxborough Street in Durango. My comments are about lodger's tax and Durango Greenhouse gas emission goals. Both require funding, so this is really a funding request statement. I very reluctantly voted last, for last year's lodger tax, foremost because workforce housing did not receive any funding. As we all know, many in our workforce cannot afford to live here. Providing more money to promote Durango as a tourist destination has worked, as demonstrated by the increase in lodger's tax. Yet such promotion is also making our town ever more attractive, more desirable, and by people moving here also more expensive. I therefore urge you to apply the additional $680,000, or a good part of it, collected towards, the tax towards workforce housing. There are different ways of doing it. I'm not gonna go into that. My second comment is about the funding needed for Durango meeting its greenhouse emission goals. As you all know, reading the news, there are climate change, there are climate change enhanced devastating heat waves happening in the US, Europe, and other places, which only worsen in the coming years. While we cannot, while climate change is a reality, we still have the opportunity to avoid a climate catastrophe. Our city itself and our tourist economy depend on our exceptional natural resources, which are threatened due to greatest drought in the past 1,200 years. Now, unless sufficient funding is set aside, Durango will fall even further behind its more, its ambitious December 7th, 2021 emission goals. With the almost $1 million in franchise tax and energy tax, you have the money that in the past unfortunately were placed solely into the general fund. This happened despite that a lot of the work for the franchise tax was carried out by environmentalists as Bruce Beisel, Harry Regal, and others. I therefore urge you to dedicate the franchise tax to meet the city's greenhouse gas emission goals. Climate change is the most urgent long-term challenge we face, and Durango and the city council have the opportunity and responsibility to demonstrate leadership by setting aside the needed funds to meet your goals of a 50% reduction of greenhouse gases by 2030 to, so that they actually could, that your goals can succeed. Thank you for your attention and for the work you do. And part of this, especially the second comment also comes on behalf of the Sustainability Alliance of Durango, of Southwest Colorado.
Thank you, Werner. Thank you. The next person who's signed up is, and I apologize, I can't quite always read the writing, Emily Roll, Roller. Okay, no problem. Need to let us know if you live in the city or, or not. Okay, cool.
Yeah, my name is Emily Roller and I am a resident of Durango. And I just wanted to speak tonight about allocating some of the funding from the lodger's tax toward workforce housing as well in Durango. As I understand, the measure required that some of the tax we spent on sustainable tourism, transportation, culture and arts, and the discretionary spending. And while it's great to see Durango investing in arts and tourism, I also really want to see Durango invest in its community and invest in the folks who live and work here to make this community better. As a renter in Durango, I love this community. I moved here to be deeply involved and to enjoy the incredible wilderness. Since I've moved here, I've been privileged to be involved with a number of local organizations. Actually, most of my friends here in Durango work for local nonprofits such as Mana, Conservation Legacy, San Juan Mountains Association. And I'd argue that it's these organizations and the work that they do that makes Durango's community so great. While we have a number of incredible nonprofits here doing impactful work, I would argue that our current rental market makes it much harder for nonprofits to hire folks who can actually live here. So when I moved here in 2021, my roommate had just been hired by Conservation Legacy. He was super excited. We sent out applications from dozens of rentals and only one of them got back to us. We ended up splitting the cost of a $1,700 lease. That lease was definitely a stretch for him, but it was the only option that we could find to be here, and that was a year ago. Recently, I found myself in the market for rental again. Again, I reached out to listing after listing, just one got back to me. Anything that was reasonable was rarely on the market for more than a day. From what I saw, studios in town range from 1,400 to 1,800. If you're lucky, you might find one for 1,200. I've seen two bedrooms for like $2,000 to 2,600 right now. I'm seeing rooms anywhere from 650 to $1,000 a month, but anything under 700 is really rare. The prices here just aren't conducive to the folks who are looking to live and work in Durango. And the market is so competitive that even if you do find a place that's affordable, it's common to have 10 or even 20 people ahead of you, from my experience. From what I understand, Durango has budget allocations to help folks buy homes here, but I want to ensure that renters aren't left behind. Many of the folks working for nonprofits and organizations here are in a place to buy, and we're kind of stuck in the rental market instead. There's a joke in my circle that people in Durango never stay, and I would argue that it isn't because people want to leave. It's because they can't actually afford to stay here. So while it's valuable to invest in tourism and arts, I'm asking that we also invest in the people that we want to stay here as well. When thinking about the budget, I'm asking that the city look into either allocating funds or allocating housing for folks who are working or are looking to live here and work for the variety of impactful nonprofits in Durango. I'm just asking that we incentivize the right people to stay. Thank you so much for your time.
Emily, thank you, and thank you for sharing your experience. Is there anyone else in the audience here, the public present, that did not get a chance to sign up and wishes to speak as part of public comment? Do we have anyone virtually who is wanting to speak?
Uh, no, Mayor. There's no one virtually.
All right. Thank you. So on that note, we'll close that. Do we have the situation with our translator worked out?
Unfortunately, not yet.
All right, no problem. So what we're gonna do next, I just want the audience to be aware of this, we're gonna go into three different executive sessions, and those will be to discuss goals and objectives with our various, our three appointees. We will probably be back sometime around 6:20 or 6:30, and then we'll go back into the general discussion of the meeting on the agenda. So the first executive session topic, I'll read it, and then we'll see if we have a motion to go into it, is discussion and possible action concerning a motion to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing a personnel matter, specifically the quarterly check-in of annual goals for the municipal court judge as permitted in CRS 24-6402F2. Do we have a motion? So moved. Second. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
And Mayor Nozworthy?
Hello, Nick?
Hey. Sam, how you doing? You're trying to figure that out here while they're in executive session.
Yeah, so what, what, what the problem is, is when you promote me to panelists, do not turn on interpretation, because when you do, I'm speaking, but only into the Spanish channel.
Okay.
You can turn on interpretation after I give the statement.
Okay, um, and, and that does make sense, but I am not figuring out how to actually change to stop you from going immediately into interpretation. So we might have to have you kind of meet, meeting and sign back in.
Yeah.
If that's, all right, doable.
Yeah, you, you want me to exit then, leave and then come back?
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you so much. Sorry about this. I'm learning. Hey, Sam. So I got you here. I'm gonna promote you to a panelist and then just leave you sit here until they get back, and then we'll put you in as an interpreter. That, that should work, right?
Yeah, but if it doesn't, I mean, can I be heard right now as I'm speaking in chambers?
I do believe we are live to chambers right now, so.
So if that doesn't work, you can put me back in here. I'll give my statement and then promote me, and then it'll start the interpretation automatically, if that's what's been happening.
Okay. All right, that makes sense to me. Can we get a phone number for you? So if we're having some issues again?
Yes.
I don't know if you, if you want to email that to us, since we very well might be live on chambers, if you want to email that to Tom, just so you don't, you're not giving out your phone number.
Oh, I, I don't, I don't know if I have his email, though.
Let me get that for you. That would be tom.sluis, S-U, or S-L-U-I-S, at durangogov.org.
Sam, can you hear me? Go ahead and unmute and say something. Still getting nothing. And Nick, he's not, he's not been promoted to interpreter yet, right? Well, that's fine as panelist, as long as he's not, actually, he did come in again automatically. He's gonna, he's coming in automatically somehow as interpreter. So we're not able to get that chance to actually have him make his announcement, because he's going straight there. I don't know how this is happening, honestly. This is what we did last time, though, too. Sam, let's try it one more time. Go ahead and go back to attendee. Yeah, try that.
Hey, Sam, can you give us a little more? Give us a mic check there for us?
Yeah, mic check, mic check. One, two, three.
Okay, cool. So we'll, we'll have you say the declaration as an attendee, then move you over to a panelist.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. And, and when, when you have been moving me to a panelist, it automatically starts the interpretation, so it, it's on. It'll be working.
Yeah, okay, good. Yeah. Okay, sorry about all this. We're, we're getting there.
No problem.
Hey Sam, this is Nick.
Yes.
Yeah. Did you want me to? I think I'll just go ahead and mute you right now just so you're not, you know, open miked right now. Sorry about that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Being an executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters specifically the quarterly check-in of annual goals for the municipal court judge as permitted in CRS 246402F2, no decisions were made. If anyone who participated in the executive session believes the discussion went beyond the proper scope of the executive session, please state your objections now. Seeing none, we'll call this portion of the executive session, this executive session to a close. We'll now go into the second possible executive session which is to, for the purpose of discussing a personnel matter specifically the quarterly check-in of an annual goals for the city attorney as permitted in CRS 246402F2. Do we have a motion to go into executive session for this purpose?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Let's have the vote.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bossens?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
And Mayor Nozworthy?
Yes. For the audience, this may be at least 15 minutes, 10 to 15 minutes, possibly longer, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm here. What's up?
Hey, my partner Maria just joined the meeting. She'll need to be promoted as a panelist as well.
Okay, excellent. Excellent. We'll get her promoted as a panelist.
Okay, thank you.
Hey Nick, are you there?
Yeah, we are.
Nick?
Hello, everyone. We're coming back and such a, Tom, do we have our translator situation resolved?
Nick, we got translator?
I believe we do have our translator situation figured out. This is Maria. She's going to take it away.
Thank you so much, and I do apologize for any confusion. My name is Maria Elisa Fuller, joining you today from the Community Language Co-op. Thinking the space to practice language justice, again, thinking the hope for allowing the space to practice language justice. I'm gonna give quick instruction on how to use the tool. We're gonna do interpretation simultaneously. So just a quick reminder to keep a comfortable rhythm while you speak to allow better interpretation. My colleague is already in the channel, so I am going to be going to the channel in a minute. Buenas tardes con todos. Mi nombre es Maria Elisa Fuller. Estoy con el Community Language Co-op. Listos y agradecidos por el espacio para practicar justicia lingüística. Estoy con mi compañero Sam. Él ya está allá en los canales. Les daré instrucciones brevemente de cómo utilizar la herramienta. Como esta es una reunión que está siendo grabada, pues será compartida. La interpretación está en la parte de abajo. Puedes seleccionar el canal de su preferencia, inglés o español. Y bueno, pues yo estoy lista. I am ready when you folks are. Please, if you can assign me as interpreter, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm now actually going to reconvene this meeting at 6:58 PM. For the record, council met in executive session for the purpose of discussion and possible action concerning a motion to convene in executive session. For the purpose of discussing a personnel matter, specifically the quarterly check-in of annual goals for the city attorney as permitted in CRS 246402F2. No decisions were made. If anyone who participated in the executive session believes the discussion went beyond the proper scope of the executive session, please state your objections now. Seeing none, the next item will be discussion and possible action concerning a motion to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing a personnel matter, specifically the quarterly check-in of annual votes for the city manager as permitted in CRS 246402F2. So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? For the public, if we, when this vote is taken, if we go into executive session, we'll be gone at least probably 15 minutes, could be, could be longer. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. Can we have the vote?
Mayor Protonis?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
Yes.
We've wanted to pay attention, class.
There's just you.
Oh, my gosh, it's become like, you know, a derpocracy.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Welcome back. All right, let's see. I reconvene this meeting at seven twenty six P M for the records city met or council met in executive session for the purpose of discussion and possible action concerning a motion to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing a personnel matter specifically to go specifically to goals of the city manager as permitted in C R S twenty four six four oh two F two, no decisions were made. If anyone who participated in the executive session believes the discussion went beyond the proper scope of the exec executive session, please state your objections now. Seeing none, we'll call this section go back to the regular agenda. Pull that out. Now, what we have is the city manager with operational updates.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to call a little bit out of order. We do have a Chip Lyle.
Call now, sorry, did have my my microphone on there. Chip Lyle, who has a presentation, just an operational update for us on a Four Corners Motorcycle Rally that'll be ongoing here at the city, I believe, over Labor Day weekend. Chip?
Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Chip Lyle. I've been a businessman in the business district for about twenty three years now. I'm also split some of my time with nonprofits. One of them is the Board of Directors for Snowdown, and I've been the president of Snowdown for about seven years here in the community. So I might have seen you before and in that role. Tonight, I'm here wearing the hat of Executive Director of the Four Corners Motorcycle Rally Corporation. I have a partner, I have a couple of partners, Trevor Byrd and Katie Byrd, who own the local Harley dealership are our partners with my brother Chris. And we want to just take a little bit of time tonight just to thank the city for all the work that they've helped us do to make it successful so far. And then, of course, any questions that you guys might have, and just give you kind of a quick update of what our events can be all about. And then some questions if you have some at the end. The Four Corners Motorcycle Rally right now is in its twenty ninth year. I don't know if everybody knows that, but it's been around for quite a long time. It's gotten through a lot of different variations. And myself and Trevor, his wife, and my brother now find ourselves in the position to try to revive it and do something good for our community. So that's what we've been doing. And we did set up a for-profit corporation, and we capitalized it ourselves with the intention of giving back the profits to the community. And we've also secured Fredericson Canelli to be our accounting firm, and later on, we will be transparent with our books for the nonprofits and things like that. And when we secured our original investment, we'll go ahead and turn the company into nonprofit. So we really want to build another event in our community, much like Snowdown. They cannot live all of us and really lift all the boats in the harbor here in the community from an economic standpoint. And our rally specifically is a lot different than others, and maybe even a lot different than what is in the past. Because we recognize that the demographic has changed in that industry of motorcycles, and it's a lot different than it was maybe twenty years ago. And we recognize that, and we're seeing that validated by a lot of the sponsors that help us with our rally. So before we get to the events and some of that, I just want to say that Durango Harley-Davidson has been a great supporter of us. The city of Durango and all the events that we've done in the past has been a great supporter of us. And the people that support us really are an indication of what kind of promoters we are, and what kind of organization we are, and where our values are at. And so this is a rally that's going to be different. We're working with the communities of Ignacio, the casino in Ignacio, the tribe in Ignacio, we're working with Purgatory Resort, La Plata County, the fairgrounds downtown. We're trying to get a lot of stakeholders in the community involved in this, so that it can be not just a Durango event, but La Plata County. And next year will be the thirtieth anniversary, and of course, we're already planning that to invite dignitaries for our parade. The Harper family is offering us some help up in Silverton with some space up there to have dual sport motorcycles next year. And so we're really trying to appeal to not just a Harley-Davidson group of people, but motorcycle enthusiasts in general. And we're also recognizing that we can't just be an adult event. That's not our community. We're not a Sturgis. We're not a, you know, a Laughlin, a Vada somewhere like that. We're Durango. We have families here. And, you know, we need to be able to bring our our families to these events as well. So we have committed to the community of Ignacio that we're not going to have some of the events that maybe you've seen in the past. There will not be liquor at the fairgrounds in Ignacio. All the events will be at the casino. The casino is a big partners of ours. The other events will be in downtown Durango, Tenth and Main, where we have a welcome party over a couple of days. We've done that in the past. There'll be some vendors and events at the Harley-Davidson dealership. And then, of course, at Purgatory, we'll have a hill climb on that Sunday after the parade here in downtown Durango. And on Saturday, we have a flat track motorcycle race at the fairgrounds. So you can imagine for several months, my partners and our staff have been planning, work with city, county people a lot. And I just want to say over the last twenty years, I've been in business in downtown Durango and all the events I've been involved in. Me being here today really represents a big deal in our community, because when I started with my business downtown and the events in our community, there wasn't somebody like Ellen in an events coordinator position. We didn't have this thing about nonprofits being part of things in downtown Durango and events. That all came about by people like Bob Conkle and other people in the community downtown. And the streamlined process the city now has for events is all part of these efforts that have been going on for twenty years. And so we're finally here now for people like Trevor and I. We can work with the city. It's really easy. Permits with Ben or whoever, everything's going really well, and it has been for years. Security with Bryce and everybody, we're working with everybody in the community. So we just want everybody to know that we're responsible. This has been the community. We're part of the community. We're promoting this as a family-friendly event, and we're looking for feedback, and we want everybody in the community to have a role in it, much like a Snowdown event. There's a role for everybody in this, whether they're a nonprofit or whatever the case may be. If you're really interested in the details, go to the website, fourcornersmotorcyclerally.com. It's up to date. It changes every day. The schedule of events is growing. Lots of details there. I have some handouts for you guys, some information, some dates, not a lot. But with that, I would say, you know, it's been great to work with the city. I can't say enough about the people I work with the city. They've been great. So thank you.
Family-friendly emphasis.
There will always be these events in motorcycle communities, much like Sturgis, the traditional ones. But what we're seeing in the the retail, if you will, of the industry is there's a younger demographic getting involved in motorcycles with, yes, Harley-Davidsons and all the other types of performance bikes. It's not about the the beer drinking, the black t-shirts for them. It's about performance, the technologies, the community, and things like that. So we're seeing a lot of variety in that. And I would say that the sponsors that we have, Harley-Davidson, BMW, some of the liquor brands, they see that we attract a different kind of demographic to the Durango community because of how we do events in Durango, because we are a family community. They want to be involved with rallies like ours, not like some of the older types. So we're seeing a lot of support because we're not the old kind of rally. Will there be loud motorcycles? Yeah, probably.
It's good to hear, though. Thank you very much.
Well, yes. Absolutely, absolutely. They have young children. He has a daughter, son. You know, they they can't take their children to events like that. They don't want, I wouldn't either. So, yeah, I mean, it's it has come a long ways. It has changed a lot, but we're really trying to look at this in a three to five-year business model where it's not going to happen in one year. It could take three years for it to really solidify. We're trying to reestablish trust with our partners, the cities, the casinos, the tribes, whoever they may be, that we can do this and do it safe and fairly, you know, for everybody involved. So a couple of years of reestablishing trust and some things like that. And I think, you know, we're expecting five to ten thousand people this year. It's really hard to predict after COVID, even with the traffic patterns on Google and analytics and reservations. I don't know how many hotels are really full with this traffic of bikers, if you will, but we'll know after this, because there are some economic impact studies we can correlate when you fill up all the hotels in Durango for three days. We'll know someday.
Yeah, I appreciate the the update as well. The events that you mentioned, they're just not only great, but they have a huge economic impact as well. I think Fox and Rec has a multiplier of two and a half or three, so I'm not sure what your multiplier is, but I think it's great, and especially these people come from quite a region. Come here, have a good time, and then they leave, leave a bunch of money behind.
Well, what we are learning, when you talk to marketing people at the train and marketing people at the casino and purgatory, and you look at the demographic that they look at, it's the same demographic that comes to us. The people that, you know, that come to this event are not what we stereotype them. You know, they do come back for ski trips and hunting trips and rafting trips and everything else. So you see a lot of these people coming back.
Maybe a question I have for you is, what what are your, some of your challenges running this event and the other event like Snowdown that you mentioned? I think safety is always a big concern, but maybe what, you can give a little bit of feedback on what things that the council and the city maybe are not aware of that would make this and other events.
I have a lot of things to tell you guys.
Top fifty.
You know, the first thing that comes to mind is money. To do an event, if you're a nonprofit in Durango, it takes money, you know, to to work with Bryce. As much as they are willing to help us, it still may take money, depending on the size of your event. It takes money to secure barricades, right? It takes money to get mounted patrol. Yes, they're volunteers, but they're nonprofit too. So in a lot of cases, a nonprofit like Snowdown or if yesterday's is taking money that was meant for a nonprofit and handing it off to the city of Durango for security or other services. Now, those services need to be done, right? They need to be paid for by somebody. But in the evolution of events in Durango over the last twenty years, we went from a community that wasn't very welcoming for events. We had to decide what kind of venues they wanted to be and how to protect those venues from promoters and greed, and they did so. They've got a great system, nonprofits only involved, and so on. Now, what I'm afraid of in my planning with Snowdown and the police department is someday we cannot have a parade in our community because we don't have enough resources for security, straight up public safety, right? We have barricades for the pedestrians. We don't have traffic barricades to stop vehicles and crowds in our community. So to me, there's personnel needs in our community for events, not just specific to Snowdown, but for even if yesterday's used to be as big as Snowdown. Now it's, you know, not as big as it was. They still have expenses, but they can't cover some of the expenses that the city can't afford to give away. And so to me, I think the nonprofits in our community, the next evolution of being a good venue for people is to also offer, you know, that security so that everyone's safe. And I don't know that Snowdown or any one event can really afford to burden that expense, even for Snowdown, it's becoming kind of big. But there's a day, I think, where we need a lot more security for our events downtown, and we've talked about it in meetings. And we've had input from people outside of our community that come to help with Snowdown. Actually, this is the war room, if you will, or the command center for Snowdown when we have a parade. So we have people from outside the state who volunteer their time with the Southwest, it's an advantage to teach us here in Durango how to do stuff. And Durango's done really well with this. In the last twenty years, we didn't know how to do stuff. Ellen has now invited me to come to her events organizers meeting and present how to work with you, the city, and how to plan parades. The city of Evergreen has reached out to me and said, will you come teach us how to do what you do in Durango with parades and events? So Durango's doing something right. Other people see it. It's time for us to go to the next level with safety. Yeah, thanks for the question. That's what a lot of us talk about all the time is we can do the event with the safety, traffic, that's.
Just one more. I I think there's lodges tax. I'm not sure if you tapped into that, but that's marketing only. So maybe, and this is exactly why I think it's great to hear from you, is the the police and safety and barricades are not covered anywhere. And I I'm not sure. I think the city has event managers or someone associated with it that helps, I guess, but I that would be, and this is why I appreciate your time.
Some of the history of events in Durango, with the barricades specifically, those were purchased, the bulk of them were purchased by Snowdown and the Iron Horse Bicycle Group and donated to the city. There's an attrition rate on those things. We lose, you know, several of those every year. They get left somewhere or run over or whatever. So there is a time when we replace that equipment. Luckily, the inventory that's big enough now, it supports just about everything except Snowdown. So we're good there. But we do need serious jersey barriers and traffic barricades like that to protect groups downtown, the inner perimeter, exterior perimeter, and so on. And we 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 talked about this. We have solutions now, but we don't have the right ones yet. And then the personnel expense, you know. We need EMS, we need public safety, and we have that for the events, but someday we're going to need more than than the nonprofits can really afford.
Thank you.
That'll prevent us from having events.
Thank you for that.
And I just wanted to add, and thank you for being here, and thank you for coming to our meeting and presenting and introducing yourself and for your creativity in bringing this to Durango and what you're doing for all the nonprofits. And we do, as as Counselor Bosman was suggesting, we do have the lodges tax. We also put a portion aside for events. I'm glad you're here coordinating with, you know, I hope you coordinate with, continue to coordinate with our staff, especially for safety. It's really important for us to to coordinate with you.
Yeah, I think all the things we do really well, this is the next thing we need to to focus on. You know, that would be the next thing, just to keep growing what we do.
Thank you so much.
And Chip, I want to thank you as well for the work you've been doing for a long time in our community and continue to do. And I want to acknowledge that Chip was here at five thirty this evening to speak. And it wasn't, we weren't quite aware we'd be going into executive session. So I appreciate you committing two extra hours to speak to us.
Do executive session is Snowdown. In fact, I missed that meeting tonight to be here, so there probably executive sessioning me right now, so. But I do want to thank Trevor. I see he's my partner's online right now. He unfortunately came down with COVID this week, and he couldn't be here, but I'm sure he would, he would thank you guys as well and for the support you guys do for us.
Thank you, Chip.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
The next update, we have Erin Hyder to introduce our new library director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is my pleasure to provide introduction for Luke Alvey Henderson, our new library director. Luke started with the city and our library team yesterday and has hit the ground running. We're very excited to have him. Although I'm confident that you'll get to know him quite well in quick time, I'd like to invite Luke up to have him give a brief introduction of himself for all, for you all tonight.
Thank you so much, Erin, and thank you, Mayor and Council. First, for giving me this opportunity to serve the people of Durango and the larger county with this position. It's of the honor of my life. I joke frequently with the different panels I interviewed with that this would be a dream job, even if it wasn't in paradise. Because you guys really have a city that's seeking excellence. You have a library staff that is already absolutely the pitch-perfect definition of public service. And you have a community that is so engaged with nonprofits that work to better the community. So I literally couldn't ask for a better situation to step into, to pursue libraries as public service. I'm just going to give you a very brief definition of my view of library services now and going into the future. For me, library service isn't just pre-literacy and storytimes and programming, some meeting space and technology access. That's something most libraries have learned to do pretty well in the last twenty years. For me, for libraries to continue on into the next century and be valid for the next twenty years, they also had to be community forums, community meeting spaces, and information hubs for job services, health and human services, and other social services. And that's the area I would really like to see growth in the next three to six months and the accompanying years. That's something I've seen a lot of success in other cities I've worked with and worked for, and I think can be very valuable here. And it'd be very, very easy for us as a library to help with that, because you have amazing groups like Companeros, like Mana, like Workforce Commission of Colorado. I mean, just so many amazing groups that are doing excellent work, and we can buy meeting room space, marketing support, research support, and connections within those groups. And librarians are very good at that because we're trained researchers. And so that's something that in the next three months will be my professional goal, is to meet with every single one of those groups and find ways that we can do outreach physically outside of the library at their physical locations, as well as marketing and research support. And when you add value to an organization like that, then the partner And when you add value to an organization like that, then the partnership deepens and they can do programming. On-site help, meet with people onsite and also provide patrons direct to us that we can provide support for. And then we can just, not just be a place of learning and growth, but also of. Long-term life skills that directly benefit the people of this community. And I see a lot of potential for growth for that here. And of course, another patron that often sometimes gets neglected by libraries is city counselors. And so I want to meet with all of you and see what we can do to be a better servant to you. So, you know, when you have research problems, well, that's just a library question, you know, that's your patron. And as a patron, you represent so many more people than what just comes through our doors. And I will say, if you look at the numbers of people coming into the library post and even pre-COVID. They're excellent. And if you look at our metrics, we're doing excellent work within the library. And my goal for the next, you know, few years is to take that outside the library doors. Because the people who are using the library love us, but it's our goal to get to the people who aren't using the library. And get to those families. So we have long-term growth. And so I hope to meet with all of you in the coming months and to help you with any upcoming problems you have. So, and to meet with you both at the library and at your own convenience, so you can see what we can offer for Durango. And I'm just really excited for this journey and the years to come. And if you have any questions, I'd love to answer. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Luca, I look forward to meeting with you. I'm the Library Advisory Board Coordinator.
Yes, I saw that on my.
His own for the city. Thank you.
I saw that. I look forward to working with you.
Yeah, yeah, really, very much. We have a lot of work to do.
Oh yeah, absolutely. That's the fun stuff.
I'll look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And welcome.
Next up, we have a comprehensive parking management plan update by Sarah.
Trying to meet Luke's enthusiasm. So parking. So Sarah Hill, I'm your transportation director. One of our department's strategic operating goals this year was to finalize a parking study. That looks at our supply and demand and the needs into the future. So wanted to save you guys an email and just give you a really brief update on where we are with that one. So we have hired a consultant, Walker Consultant. They have worked with 60 communities across Colorado. And most recently have done assessments of parking programs for Leadville, Santa Fe. Salida, they have a lot of really good background in the parking industry. And we have a collaborative city team that's been developed, very cross-departmental. Representatives from the Transportation Department, Community Development, Parks and Rec, Police. To really be able to guide us through the process. So we have a public survey that's going to be going live in the next couple of days. We're hoping to get a lot of feedback from every user of the parking system. We know parking. Impacts everyone, residents, visitors, folks that live in the county, anybody who's accessing downtown. So we're really going to be pushing that survey. And then we have our first public meeting scheduled for August 4th. We have a morning opportunity from eight to 10 at the library. Thanks, Luke. And also an evening option, five to seven PM at the library. And we're getting community stakeholder groups kicked off as well. That will include Business Improvement District, the Chamber of Commerce. A number of other different community groups. Boulevard Neighbor Association, yes. And the plan is going to be really comprehensively looking at our meter program. Residential parking permit program, future infrastructure needs, electric vehicles. Just a really wide range of programs that have to do with our parking needs both now and into the future. So we're excited to kick it off and I'm happy to answer any questions. We will have the consultants in front of you guys to get your input as well. And the schedule right now looks like they'll have a draft plan before you for adoption at the end of November.
Are you also looking into parking structure?
Parking structure, infrastructure will be part of the full analysis.
Okay.
Supply and demand and whether or not those type of facilities are warranted in our program. Yeah.
Okay, so it's part of it. And will you send us information and/or links that such that we can share for these public meetings?
Absolutely.
I think people have a lot to say about parking.
Yes.
And they'd like to participate, I think.
Yeah, we're going to use all of our public information resources to really plug the meeting opportunities and the survey.
Great.
Make sure that that's on the city calendar as well.
Thank you.
I know you mentioned a specific homeowners group, the Third Avenue, the Boulevard Association. But I also remember that folks living on around 32nd and Second Avenue had a particular interest in permit parking. Will you make some targeted outreach to those residents? Different than just, here's our, you know, PR, our announcement on the website and anything.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll be reaching out to all of the stakeholders, we're calling them our stakeholders. We've been collecting lists of interested parties for a couple of years now, anybody who has had an inquiry about parking. And that neighborhood definitely will be included. And the intent of the plan is to be very community driven. So we're anticipating to identify residential parking permit locations based on what we hear from the community. And the neighborhood that you mentioned is definitely one that rises to the top.
Thank you for the presentation. I, I thought for some reason that this parking study was already done or close to completion, but it sounds that it's just been awarded.
Just getting started. Yeah, we kind of waited to get to a point with the downtown next steps to be a concurrent process. And we issued the request for proposals and followed that process, which takes about six weeks usually. So we just got lined up for mid-year start.
And what order of magnitude does a parking study cost?
It was budgeted 125,000 in the operating budget this year.
Yeah, and that's what they came in at a core?
A little bit under that, not.
And what would be the outcome from a study like this? It's not going to say how many parking spaces we have. We probably will say that, but are they going to come up with solutions? Or are they going to just say, this is your demand, this is your supply?
Absolutely. They're gonna, so number one, they're going to identify kind of short-term, quick fixes, like key strategies that we can start implementing now, based on what? Issues that we're hearing from the community. And then for the long range, we've asked them to kind of give us budgetary. Proposals through the end of 2045 or recommendations of what some of the infrastructure might look like or. Technology advancements might look like. So we have, we're going to have a pretty data-driven set of projects and best practice recommendations that are a result of the plan.
And the surveys, et cetera, are run through them or is that separate from them done by the city?
The consultant developed the survey for us and we'll be pushing that out to the community and it's just a, you know, they, we've hired them. So it's a collaborative. Collaborative process here.
Yeah, well, I'm always a bit concerned about the representativeness of surveys, if only 400 people respond to it. Typically the ones that have a certain opinion, strong opinion in one way or the other. But no, it's good. Glad to hear it.
We will have, we'll have, surveys will be translated and we'll send them out to, you know, all the, we have a pretty extensive list of. Transportation stakeholders that include a lot of the nonprofits and. Different organizations in town that'll help us push the information because it does impact, you know, it's part of the transportation system and it impacts everyone who lives here. So we're definitely going to try to, to get a very representative sample of survey responses.
And is this, this is for downtown only or the whole city?
Focusing on downtown, but then looking at different neighborhoods that have identified critical need, parking need.
I'm very curious to see that product because not only do we have the Nayar Building, Police Department, all these buildings that are going to have some changes and the downtown. Pump outs as well as the fact that we should multimodal, this is your field. You know, if we have better connectivity to commuter pathways and bike parking spaces, it will impact everything. So hopefully by the time the study is done, there's not too many changes to make that study still.
Yeah, and thanks for bringing that up because we did request that they look, that they complete the plan through a lens of transportation demand management that identifies. A multitude of solutions for getting downtown so that we're not just focusing on. Car element of the transportation network, but looking at other solutions to alleviate some of our parking problems like transit. Bicycling, pedestrian access to downtown.
Thank you.
Sarah, I have one quick question. Will this study also look at potential areas of growth? I'm thinking of La Posta.
Yes, and that was one of the reasons we really wanted to make sure that we have a very cross-departmental team, staff working on it. Scott Shine is part of the team and we're looking at. Different areas across the community that are targeted for growth and they're going to be included in part of the analysis.
Great, thank you.
Then Mayor and Counsel, our final update is our quarter two financial report by Devin.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I'm Devin Schmidt, the Budget and Strategic Plan Officer. I'm going to give you all a brief update on the quarter two financials. And I am just going to share my screen here. I know you all are going on about eight hours of meetings, so I'm going to try and make it brief. So starting off with the city sales tax, I'm happy to report that we are approximately 590,000 over the 2021 revenue. So still seeing a good uptick there. I did want to make a note that June was the first month where we saw a small dip, less than 1% over 2021 collections. So for the remainder of the year, we're really looking at about a 4% increase over what we budgeted. So still looking at coming in over what we had originally adopted in the 2022 budget. However, just a small decrease there in the sales tax. So overall, you can see that the city collected 17.2 million dollars in sales tax collections. With a variance of 50% to the budget. So being that we're 50% through the year, it looks like we're going right on track there, but I still think we'll end up about 4% over what we had originally budgeted. So that is that for the sales tax. I'm going to move on to the quarter two report by fund. So we made a little change to the financial report and what we did here is created a summary view. So council is able and, and the public, because these are posted on Open Gov as well as our website. Are able to see at a quick glance where each fund is at from a performance indicator perspective. So positive means no concerns noted. Caution means that staff is monitoring the current variance and then needs focus is that staff is currently acting on the variance with a budget amendment. So wanted to provide that update. So if we move on and we're looking at the general fund. We have a positive performance indicator as the fund is exceeding the historical budget by 6%. And the major component there has to do with taxes and fees, so that bucket of dollars there. Revenues overall are at 1.9 million over expenses, as you can see through here. And for the general fund with, if we look at it on a division level or a kind of by function, if you will. You can see that we have about 88% in the positives and two are in caution. The two areas that are listed in caution is due to the timing of when contracts are paid for at the beginning of the year and services. So nothing to note there as far as needing any amendments. I'm going to jump on to the internal service funds. For our internal service funds, I'm happy to report that the self-insurance is listed as positive. So sorry, I'm going to kind of cruise past these ones here that are listed as positive and. I'll take a moment at the end there to answer any questions from council. But self-insurance, so we are showing a positive for this fund. And that's really because our projected ending fund balance is at about that 948,000. Our insurance broker recommended that we have about 20% and that's to cover the claims. And so with that, we are reflecting the self-insurance now as positive. The risk management fund, I will mention, this is the only fund that we're showing as cautionary. Staff continues to monitor this fund closely. And this has to do with our projected ending fund balance at about 70,000. So if we were to receive a large claim. We would need to take action on that item. Moving on into the enterprise funds. With the enterprise funds, all of these are listed as positive. So starting off with the water fund, I did want to highlight that on the next council meeting. You will see that we're going to have a reduction to some of the CIP projects. So any of those projects that aren't going to be complete in 2022 for various reasons, whether they weren't design ready or shovel ready. You'll see that reduction in that mid-year adjustment. Going on to sewer, we have the sewer fund listed as positive as well. With that, the revenues are exceeding expenditures by 457,000. So positive on the sewer fund, there will be a couple of projects in there as well. That will be reduced on the budget side since they will not be completed this year. One note, this $2 million will be, once that transfer comes from the operating fund. You'll see that that is a, and not, not a negative fund balance, so. Moving on to airport, I did want to take a quick note to say that we are showing airport as a positive performance indicator. However, we are seeing that airport traffic is down about 3% from 2019 and about 14% from 2021, which was really a very unprecedented year. A lot of that has to do with the crew staffing that they're seeing with the airport, but still a very positive area on that front. So we still are showing a.
Crew staffing with the airlines.
Airlines, I'm sorry, not the airport, airlines, thank you, as I. Still showing a really positive, revenues are exceeding expenditures by 997,000 in the airport fund. Trash and recycle, so as we're moving on to that fund, we have that listed as positive as well. With the revenues exceeding expenses by 404,000. And transportation, transportation is also listed as positive. Currently expenses are exceeding revenues by about 11,000. A lot of that would have to do with some of those grant receivables. So transportation is receiving that 100% reimbursement for their services through Chrisa and CareSpend. So that's a positive opportunity that we have and parking revenues is continuing to show a little bit of a shortfall due to the bump out program. Which is those parking spaces not being available. And then finally, moving on into our special revenue funds. These are going to mirror the same sales tax collections that I had discussed as we're looking at the oh five, the 15 and the 19. So we're at about 12% or 585,000 for the two half cent funds. So that's the 2015 and the 2019. And that would put us at 293,000 for both of the quarter cent taxes. So I did want to take a moment to pause because I know I ran through that really fast, but I wanted to see if there was any questions from council on any of the funds that I went through before I move on to our quarter CIP report.
Any questions?
Absolutely. Yeah. And I think that's a really good point and a good note to make. This was something that we had made a change to and we thought it would be an easy way to kind of show areas where we are needing to make changes. You know, we've come to council a couple of times this year because of a capital projects that's coming in, you know. Way over budget because of the cost of labor and material and things of that nature. So I think that's a good example. But also a very good point to highlight for the public to understand that piece. No, no, absolutely not. We will, do you have some analysis behind it? And there's always a, there's always a good justified reason as to why we're bringing that forward. So, thank you. Okay, then moving on. So this is our capital projects report. On the online version, you are able to click in and see where these capital projects exist on this map here. But at a high level, we have 10 projects that are listed as complete. So that's about 11% of our total capital projects. We have 19 projects that are in current construction, which equates to about 21% of our total projects. 15 projects are in design and that's about 16%. 19 are in pre-construction and that would represent 21%. And then we have 29 projects that are in pre-design at 32%. And so, I just wanted to provide kind of a high-level update. Again, all of these reports are listed either on Open Gov and they're also on our website. And before we move, before anything else, is there any questions on the CIP report from Counsel?
Yeah, the, thank you so far for the presentation. The capital projects is, the numbers you gave, is that percentage based on dollar amount or on number of projects?
Number of projects.
And then on the previous presentation, will you also provide the actual fund balances? Or is that, or is it later in the
So, the actual fund balances are included. If you go to the very first page of this report, you are able to click on the link, which will bring you into Open Gov. There's got to be a faster way, which will bring you into Open Gov. So, if you come right here, you will be able to see the actual year-to-date active fund balances versus the projected with, has those budgetary impacts.
Okay, yeah, I didn't click it. I guess the increase, I assume, compared to the last time you, I mean, what was it, 83 million or something?
Is there a specific fund you were looking at or just?
There was one time you provided the Excel sheet, I think, or another PDF file, and it showed all the fund balances. Well, I guess, no, that's not the one. It doesn't matter. I'll, I'll leave you to the presentation, getting off track. Thank you.
No problem. I'd be happy to follow up and answer that question for you. Any other questions from Counsel? Okay, I just did also want to highlight that we have a budget town hall on July 27th at 5:30 here at City Hall, where we are looking to get engagement with the public. We also, speaking of surveys, have our public survey that's out and will close on 7:29. So, we have gotten around 61 responses on that so far. So, we're looking forward to incorporating all of that into our 2023 budget process. Thank you.
Thank you, Devin.
That concludes our operational report.
Lot of things to cover today. We will now go to the review of the consent agenda. Consent agenda is intended to allow the city council by single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under Agenda Item 9. Can we have a reading of the consent agenda, please?
Yes, items 8.1 through 8.3 are approval of minutes. 8.1 is approval of minutes from June 29th, 2022 of the City Council Joint Study Session with County, with County Commissioners. 8.2 is approval of minutes from July 5th, 2022, City Council Study Session. 8.3 are the minutes from July 5th, 2022 for the City Council Regular Meeting. Items 8.4 and 8.5 are final readings of ordinances. 8.4 is the final reading, reading of ordinance O-2022-24, an ordinance authorizing a utility easement for Charter Communications, Inc. for the installation of an underground fiber optic line to service the Aspero Apartments. 8.5 is final reading of ordinance O-2022-25, an ordinance authorizing a utility easement for Fast Track Communications for the installation of an underground fiber optic line to service the Hillcrest Golf Course. And lastly, item 8.6 is discussion and possible action concerning a resolution authorizing an additional appropriation to the Open Space Parks and Trails Fund for a grant modification from the Bureau of Land Management for Fire Mitigation.
Does any Counselor wish to have an item removed from the consent agenda? No? So, then can we have a motion? To approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Then let's vote.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Bossman?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
And Mayor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Okay, so next we're on to public hearings. And I think, Dan, is that, are you going to leave this? Yeah, there we go.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have three hearings before you this evening. First one up is LEDT, LUDC text amendments. So, bear with me here. Actually, I think I need to share my screen first. Okay, so yeah, Dan Armatano with the Community Development Department. These are LUDC text amendments mostly focused on our ADU standards. So, I'll start with a bit of an overview of ADUs in Durango, go into some history and then talk about surveys before diving into the amendments themselves. First ADUs have been here in Durango for a long time, about as long as the city itself. From a community development perspective and a housing perspective, they are an efficient way to increase the number of dwellings we have in our existing and proposed new neighborhoods, mostly because they make use of existing infrastructure and they also don't require substantial development approvals. They're modestly sized, so evidence suggests that they are typically a more affordable rental housing option. Here in the city, we legalized them back in 2014 when we adopted our new land use and development code specifically for EN 1 and 2, as well as our other less common residential zones. They were expanded to EN 3 with some comparable standards in 2015 and then to 4, 5, and 6 in 2019. All of these required some pretty substantial public process and input, and that led to some substantial limiting provisions for ADUs. First and foremost, no variances are allowed for ADUs and that's one of the driving factors for the code amendments before you this evening. There's also specific standards for unit size, 550 square feet for the vast majority of ADUs, specific design standards, parking requirements, et cetera. Another requirement is owner occupancy for properties with ADUs. And then finally, occupancy limits were put into place. So, an ADU, a property with an ADU cannot have more unrelated individuals than a single-family home would. So, that's five unrelated individuals on a single parcel. The proposed amendments this evening, staff feels are incremental. They will improve consistency amongst the regulations for the different zones and also flexibility for this use as well. We've been working on these since the fall of 2021. There's been a lot of input from staff as well as from the code alignment group. And we've got some pretty substantial public feedback that we gained through a couple of surveys, which I'll talk about as well. To dive into some data here, so just for some context, Durango has about 9,100 residential units. That's from the State Demographer's Office, 143 ADUs. So, that's 1.5%, pretty small proportion of the number of residential units we have in the city. Pre-existing ADUs are the majority of those, about 2/3. Those are units that were registered during our second unit registration period, which started back in 2014. During that period, we had a lot of properties come in with additional units. A lot of those were deemed to be duplexes or other non-conforming multifamilies and not specifically classified as ADUs. So, just to clarify that, I know that there's been some confusion on that in the past. As far as new ADUs, since 2014, we've permitted 44. So, it's a pretty small number. Most of those are detached units in ENs 1, 2, and 3, as you can see on the map at the right there. The blue stars are new ADUs, whereas the red triangles are pre-existing ones. I think this was included with your agenda documentation as well. So, the vast majority are focused in those three areas. And again, just for context, new ADUs are less than half a percent of all dwellings within the city limits. So, we did put out a couple of surveys to gain some feedback from the public on this. Two surveys, one was for ADU owners specifically. We used the information we had on file to reach out to the folks that we had that owned these units. The goal of the owner's survey was to try to understand how these are used. Are they rented? Are they sitting vacant? What's, what's the purpose of these? Unfortunately, we had somewhat of a limited response, mostly due to, I think, a lot of our emails were out of date that we had on file for these going back, in some cases, eight years. Some of these properties, maybe a significant number, have changed ownership as well and we weren't necessarily aware of that. But what we did find, I think, was some interesting and helpful results. We did note that most ADUs are rented or occupied by family members. Those that are rented seem to be offered at a more affordable rate comparatively speaking. A lot of them, more than half were at less than $1,000 a month. And one of the other really interesting notes that we heard was that folks like these units, like to have these units because it helps them afford the mortgage for their homes. A lot of the folks that responded said they specifically purchased their properties because it had an ADU and that would help offset their mortgage costs. So, certainly some benefits there in terms of allowing for homeownership opportunities here in the city. We put out a community survey as well and the goal of this was really to try to understand public knowledge and perception of our existing regulations and also try to understand if there was support for potential code updates as well as a possible incentive program, which you'll hear about from Eva here later on tonight. This survey was pretty popular. We got over 300 responses and broadly, there was a lot of support for flexibility to ADU standards. The question was framed as whether or not the city should promote construction of new ADUs and we had 75% of respondents stating that they did agree with that. There's also support for some of our more basic requirements in terms of owner occupancy, no vacation rentals. So, we certainly noted that as well. And then there is public interest in building more of these, these units as well. We also identified some of the barriers for construction in new ADUs, maybe some of the reasons why we have so few. And those were noted here on the figure at the lower right. So, construction cost is a pretty obvious one. We're not really sure that the city can play much of a role in impacting that. But parking requirements, building and setback standards are certainly things we can address through code amendments. That's one of the things we're going to talk about here in a little bit. Then impact fees may be something that the incentive program can address as well. So, this slide is just a summary of the amendments. I won't read these out one by one, but you guys do have code red lines in your packet. Have to come back to this as need be. I do just kind of want to highlight the more substantial changes here on the next few slides. The first is alternative compliance. So, as I mentioned, no variances are currently allowed for properties with ADUs. We are proposing to strike the language at the top and propose essentially at the discretion of the administrator. So, again, a staff-level variance, ADUs may be eligible for relief from standards in sections 2323F, H, and I through the alternative compliance process, which is described elsewhere in the code. So, what is in FH and I, these are our dimensional standards that apply for all new construction and they are specific to ADUs in this section of code. So, F is bulk and intensity, that's floor area ratio and lot coverage, typically percentages of a property that can be used for a structure. And then setbacks in building height as well as the more specific design standards. So, those are the things that are in play for variances. We're not talking about variances for owner occupancy or for some of the other broader sections of the code that have substantial public support still. Alternative compliance has been in place and has been a part of our code since 2005. It's one of our more popular project types. I think we get around 20 applications or so for alternative compliance a year for typically single-family homes, everything from single-family homes all the way down through fences. It uses the EN Design Guidelines, which is a robust document that has standards for all of our different EN zones. We also look at neighborhood context pretty closely and neighbors are noticed, so we take public comment as well. Our findings on these are always very specific to avoid setting precedents. We talk about them amongst staff as needed. And if it's a particularly complex proposal, we have the ability to refer them to the designer review board and we've done that in the past and it's been very helpful. Just to talk briefly about expanding where ADUs are allowed. So, we are proposing to eliminate the minimum lot size for integrated ADUs. So, that is struck from the table here on the left column, keeping them in place for detached units where they are applicable. That's EN 1, 2, and 3. And then also allowing the use in the residential high-density zone. That's the only residential zone right now where the use is not allowed. So, with this change, all of our residential zones will have provisions for ADUs. And just to provide a visual for lots that are currently ineligible for ADUs based on minimum lot size, these couple maps, I'm sorry if you can't see this one. These couple maps show EN 1, 2, and 3. So, all of these lots do not meet the minimum lot size. In EN 1, it's 5,000 square feet. EN 2, it's 7,000 square feet. And EN 3, it's 7,500 square feet. So, it comes out to a little under 4,000 lots that would be eligible for at least, and, sorry, 400, thank you. 400 lots that would be eligible for an integrated ADU, not a detached ADU. We are proposing a parking change right now in ENs 4, 5, and 6. There's an allowance for street parking, one on-street parking space if these conditions are met. So, street parking needs to be allowed in the adjacent right-of-way. Can't be a busy street, essentially that's what a collector or an arterial street is or a snow route. And the street dimensions need to be demonstrated as being able to accommodate two drivelanes and on-street parking. So, the amendments would extend that allowance to all zones where ADUs are allowed. And again, this map on the right here just shows the collectors, arterials, or snow routes. So, there are more streets than one might think that would qualify as that. I think especially in EN 1, it's notable, East Third is, is, I believe, a collector. So, happy to come back to that if you have questions. Owner occupancy is, as I mentioned before, one of the more supported standards that we have for ADUs. Right now, we require a notarized affidavit certifying owner occupancy every odd year. This is something that's been pretty challenging for staff to enforce. So, we are proposing to simplify that and require a bit more of a beefed-up standard upfront when we approve a new ADU. So, we'll require a notarized and recorded affidavit when an ADU is approved. If it's recorded, then that would come up in a title search for any new buyer of the property. It can include some language basically stating that the new buyer needs to certify owner occupancy once they purchase the, the property. And then for the biannual recertification process, we are going to keep that in place, but try to go digital with that. And that's really what the proposed code language is implying, something similar to what we do with, say, business licenses, where business owners can just log in and recertify that simply. Yes. Yeah, yeah, we haven't figured out exactly how that would work yet because we haven't adopted the code yet. But that's presumably what we would look at, something where either they would get an email reminder or, you know, that, that would probably be the case. And then they would go to the city's website and fill out a brief form and recertify that to us. And we do have ways to check up on that, of course, as well if we are doubting that somebody is being honest with us. So, just quickly, alignment with adopted plans, both the 2021 and 2022 strategic plans have fairly robust housing directives. 2021 specifically did direct staff to update the LUDC to promote the development of housing. That's really what we're doing here with ADUs. And then 2022 encourages housing for multi-generational and mixed-income, basically mixed-income community. ADUs are sometimes called granny flats. So, I think the multi-generational piece of that is covered there. The housing plan does include some specific directives for ADUs. Evaluate the possibility of expanding use to additional Durango neighborhoods. Part of this proposal does accomplish that. And then evaluate and propose new parking standards for certain residential uses. We are doing that as well, as I explained. And then the comp plan broadly anticipates LUDC amendments and encourages workforce housing in a variety of housing types. Planning Commission reviewed this at the end of June, June 27th. There were a number of comments, quite a bit of discussion on this. If you guys had a chance to read through the minutes, there were, I just want to highlight a few of those. There were a fair amount of concerns about enforcement and how this really should be a staff priority and not something that we put on neighbors. So, I think improving that owner occupancy language will help to address this. There's also some questions and comments on density and whether ADUs do or do not contribute. As I mentioned, they have the same occupancy requirements as a single-family As I mentioned, they have the same occupancy requirements as a single-family home, so that is and remains staff position. There's some concerns with architectural massing along the alleys. And then specifically alleys as well. Commissioners thought that paving alley should be a priority if the city is going to be encouraging new housing units along those. Broadly, overall, there was a fair amount of agreement. The ADUs can be used to offset homeownership costs and help to create rental housing opportunities, generally with a pretty minimal impact to, to the neighborhoods where they're located. So they did ultimately recommend adoption on a four-to-one vote. As for public comment, there was none during the planning commission meeting. We did receive four comments before we put the agenda packet together, which were included. I think there's been two more that have come in since, and they've been pretty split on this. So two comments pretty broadly opposed, citing a lot of the common issues that we hear about increasing density or increasing housing in our established neighborhoods, specifically overcrowding, parking, infrastructure capacity, as well as privacy concerns. There were two comments that pretty broadly supported the changes. One that was kind of supportive of some aspects, but not all. And then one suggested that these changes really didn't go far enough, so sort of the full gamut there. To conclude, staff really feels that the existing restrictions that we've had in place for a long time are somewhat burdensome. It's part of the reason why we probably have so few new ADUs. That's what we've heard from the survey. The amendments before you this evening are really pretty incremental, so no major changes, we feel. But they do allow for greater flexibility while preserving most of the restrictions that we have on this use. There's been broad public support for flexibility, as we saw from the surveys. Reducing the regulations and allowing for more ADUs may help promote homeownership within the community, and of course, would increase the number of possible rental units out there. And these amendments, of course, support adopted city plans and policies. So motion is the same as what you've got in the packet, and I'm sure there will be questions. I'll pass it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. So what I'll start is I'll open the public hearing for comments, and then we'll have questions of you. Is there anyone who would like to speak? And so, okay, so we've got this listed. Are you?
I'm Bruce Garlick. Yes, I am.
So welcome, and we're kind of limiting this to three minutes or so.
Three minutes. Okay, guys are still doing that. Well, Mayor, City Council, I've lived here now for, actually, 45 years. Ever since there was a drive-in down where all the apartments and condos are now too. I'm a little bit concerned, of course, because, you know, I moved here for a specific reason. Grew up in Los Angeles. I'm sure a lot of people here grew up in big cities, and we moved here to get away from all that crowding and try to love the mountains and love the town and the things that it represents. I'm very concerned about adding more ADUs to our neighborhoods. We already have parking issues, and I feel like that the alleys are not a really good place to build houses. They're not designed without no sidewalks and various things. So I feel like there's just a lot of issues with this, and I think we should look at it a little more carefully. Maybe finish building out the ones that are already approved instead of allowing a lot more. I know that there's a few people that would like to see these, because, of course, they can make a little more money on their property. But at the cost of what, you know, I mean, it's our little town. I hate to just spoon pack it. I feel like there's a lot of growth going out in Three Springs, and the Mesa's probably next, a lot of room out there. But just feel like we're moving kind of fast on this, and once we do this, we really can't take it back. Parking is a big issue, as we all know. That's, that's one of our priorities, and we just heard a presentation on parking, which we don't have a lot of. And just more people, more traffic, more dogs barking, just more people. Do we really need that for our town? I mean, is this really what we need? I just don't feel like this is what we need at this moment in time. I did move here for a reason, and I think all of us know that. Why are we all here? Not to live on top of each other. We want space. And hate to see us just pack them in. And I just got back from Jackson Hole, and oh my God. In fact, I missed the opening part of the public hearing because of that. But it, it was so crowded, we tried to get lunch and went to the park, and we couldn't even find a place to sit down and have lunch. Physically drive out of town, which took about 30 minutes from traffic, to just find a place to eat lunch. It's so crowded, and I'd hate to see us do that to our town. I think a lot of people come here for the reason to get away from all that. So I'd like you to reconsider that, please, and think very carefully about what you're proposing, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garlick, and I want to know, I appreciate you waiting so patiently to speak. You've been here. No, 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 we've had some other issues, but I, I saw you sitting in the audience waiting, so thank you. Do we have anyone else in the audience? I don't see anyone. Do we have, I'm not certain who's handling, Nick, if Nick is there. Nick, do we have anyone who's raised their hand as an attendee who would like to speak as part of this public hearing?
No, Mayor, we do not.
All right. Do we have questions for Dan? Council questions for Dan?
I appreciate the presentation. You had sent an email a while ago, and I think you already, in that email, you addressed it. But I'm going to mention some things just to confirm that, so it's clear for everybody. These ADUs are not short-term rentals. They have to be occupied, obviously. What was another key thing? They're currently allowed in EN through, one through six, so basically the whole city, I guess. Is there any area where it wouldn't be allowed?
Yeah, the only residential zone where they're not allowed right now is the residential high-density zone. So these changes would allow them in that zone as well. Little bit of a question as to whether or not we'll see very many there. Duplexes are in allowed use in that zone. There's a bit of nuance with code in terms of a scenario where an ADU could be allowed, but we figured it was best to just open up that zone as well to the use.
Yeah, so I, I always have the, my main concern remains the same, that I worry about character of neighborhoods. And we may have received, I saw the survey, there might have been limited comments, but that's only up until the point that someone builds an ADU in the house next door, and then you have issues, and then we see the consequences, and that's only one or two. So that's my personal opinion, but I think the council and the planning commission have already, and the department have moved it past that point. So that's past this discussion. From the numbers you provided in the presentation, they really don't address, they do not address housing needs. Forty-five units over the past eight years, that's, that's not much. So I guess my biggest concern would be, and it was part of the other comments, is enforcement. And, and that would be on safety, building codes and so on, as well as people using it as short-term rentals. And because we don't have, I mean, I don't think you, the city staff is checking up, unless there's a phone call maybe, but these ADUs are very easily used for short-term rentals, and that is another type of impact on the neighborhood. So what are your thoughts, maybe, is the question I'll ask?
Yeah. First, on short-term rentals, we currently contract with MuniRev's to monitor our short-term rental listings in the city. That's been very effective. So I think in the past few years, the number of enforcement issues we've had with short-term rentals has decreased year over year substantially. I think this year, we may have only sent less than five enforcement letters out. So I can say with a high degree of confidence, ADUs are not being used as short-term rentals. If they are, we would find them quickly and, and shut that down post haste. So that piece, I feel like I can be pretty confident on. As far as the neighborhood character, I think, you know, you touched on this briefly. We, we definitely talked about this a lot. Our alternative compliance process, you know, may be scary to say, oh, well, we're allowing variances for these now. That's really driven by neighborhood character. That's pretty much the purpose of those established neighborhood design guidelines, is to try to ensure that the design of new structures in those neighborhoods meets the character, meets the intent of what those neighborhoods were designed to look like, and well, as well as how they function. We also take public comment on that, so those concerns are certainly heard by staff when they come in. Remind me of.
No, maybe a follow-up on the enforcement. So if someone rents it short-term, what is the process? What is your, the tools you have, except for sending a letter, you can't do this, but is there, what is the consequence?
So first thing we do is to send an enforcement letter. I think, you know, a lot of times, these don't come up with ADUs. If someone has an ADU and they've gone through our process to get it legally permitted, they know that they're not allowed to have a short-term rental. So typically with short-term rental enforcement, we sit, we take sort of a softer initial approach of sending them a letter, code enforcement letter. Language isn't soft in the letter. It says pretty much, take this down, cancel all your listings, or be subjected to enforcement remedies. I think if it was an ADU, we would have that person's contact information on file. We'd make a phone call and, you know, say, this is not an allowed use. You know, we have the ability to put a cease and desist on their door if we had to. You know, I don't know that we would necessarily go that route. We've never had to up to this point. But I think that would be a reasonable course of action if, if we needed to go that route, and certainly if it was egregious, so, yeah.
So there is, there's a formal process that you can take all the way. And that, that's what I wanted to hear, because in the end, I, I, you know, I don't know how much time and how, how much quality the data is that you get on the ADUs and how they're used, et cetera, as well as building codes, do they meet the older ones that are being up for? How do you say that? The, to, to be made compliant, I guess. Is that include inspections on fire, fire extinguishers, and smoke alarms, and et cetera?
Certainly, new ones need to go through a building permitting process and need to be issued a certificate of occupancy. So the building official gets in there, inspects everything, makes sure it's, it meets building code. Pre-existing ADUs, most of which are already legalized at this point, at least all the ones we're aware of. It's a little bit different because of the volume of those applications that we got. At the time, we allowed those property owners to sign an owner, sorry, as an age and safety affidavit, which I'd be happy to provide for you if you'd like to see it. But it basically is the owner attesting to the safety of the unit. So we determined that it wasn't feasible to get our building inspectors into every single one of those ADUs. We wanted to legalize them, so that was sort of the workaround for those specific units.
Yeah, I appreciate it all. I, I saw the survey. The survey is a small number, not representative, and I am sure that it would be primarily driven by people that have a house and that are willing to add an ADU, or realtors, or people that make money off of it. But it seems this is where the council and the different departments are heading. And I think even though it's a drop in the bucket, it's still a little bit of additional affordable housing, and we certainly need it, so.
Small part of the solution, you know, we obviously need housing. And just quickly on the survey, you know, I mean, we, we put that survey out in March, which was sort of just as the first Omicron wave, I guess, was sort of passing us by. So in the past, we've had a ton of public meetings on this. I don't know if we would have gone that route in this case, given the incremental extent of these, these amendments. But, you know, the survey was really the best tool we had to generate public feedback. Thankfully, I do think we got a pretty decent response on that, so, yep.
I'll jump in. Thank you to you and staff and the Planning Commission for all the work you've done on getting us to here. I appreciate, you know, the red lines and the reiterations that we've gotten here. I too, like you, moved, when I moved here, the drive-in movie was still here. I moved here because of the spirit and character of Durango. I love it. However, there's no such thing as it staying where it's at. It's either growth and smart growth, hopefully, or it's backwards. And so I appreciate, I mean, 45, that's what, five and a half units a year that have been being added in. It has to be owner occupied, and so that is, you know, positive. And when I saw the rentals were around a thousand dollars a month, that's super positive. You know, helping our, you know, restaurant workers and rafters and find housing, which is impossible anymore. And so I feel like there's a balance, and I think that we're coming to where we get more housing, even though it's very small, but where we also, hopefully, with the parking requirements that are still there, even though it's less, a little bit less, we get to a spot where it's a good common ground. And we're allowing for people and young families to afford their homes by having ADUs and also providing a spot for, you know, some lower rentals and preserving the character of Durango. So I appreciate the hard work, and I know it's, you're never going to please anyone, everyone, not anyone, but everyone. And I think that it's good work, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to make a couple of comments, and I don't know if these might lead to questions. I did want to point out that we do have one area in town, the Crestview area, that although it is within an area that we would allow ADUs by their ownership deeds, they are not allowed to have more than a single-family home in that area. And so that's a little bit challenging, because I do know that there are ADUs in that area that are not legal. And I have suggested to the people who were concerned about it that they need to report them and do something about it. So, but that Crestview bring is a really challenging area because of those covenants on the deeds. The comment about offsetting ownership costs is really only true if, for the current owner who builds an ADU, because once the ADU is built, it increases the value of the property and takes into account the rents that could be garnered from it. So the build, yes, absolutely, it definitely helps people with their costs of their mortgage. But once the house is sold, it's really counted into the price of the home. So it may seem like they can say, oh, I can afford a $400,000 home because I have this rent. But really, what they're doing is they're affording to be able to buy that entire thing. They could have bought the same house without an ADU for less. So I just, I don't, I'm, I'm a little cautious about how to look at that. The other thing that I'm, concerns me is the number of units versus the staff time and board time spent to create the ADU projects. We've been working on this since I was on Planning Commission. And I know there's been hours and hours and hours of staff time and Planning Commission time spent. And I would really like to see when we work on projects for increasing housing, which I think is a critical, probably one of our, probably our top priority, that we also look at the staff contribution time to it and the board contribution time to it. Because if we are creating 45 units with three years of time versus creating 300 units with one year of time, I think we need to look at what we're really accomplishing here. So that's one of the things that concerned me. But on the other hand, I want to say that one of the reasons why I completely support ADUs is because it puts people locally, like, so they're, they are in town. Infill is less expensive for a community. You don't have to put in more water and sewer and more streets. People can walk rather than driving their cars. And I think that that's a huge contribution to the quality of life that we have in this community. Many studies have shown that if communities do not grow by 2% a year, then everything becomes more expensive to the people who live there because of inflation. So the cost for that water, the cost for the sewer, the cost for the streets. And pretty soon, you don't have lower-income people living here, so you don't have mixed income here. And you don't have multi-generational here. You end up with a retirement and second-home community of wealthy residents. And I don't, I think the quality of life and the culture that Durango is, is about that multi-generational mixed unity that you had up there in the strategic plan. And that's what we really moved here for. I know that's what I moved here for. So I support the ADU concept. I just have some of those other concerns about how we're using staff time and, and commission time.
Sure, just quick response on that.
Okay.
The, the covenants issue in EN four, Crestview, is something we're aware of. We've talked about it as a staff a couple of times. We may be talking about it at some point as well. We haven't recently. Leave that there for now. The, I think your comment is valid about staff time. I do want to note that we have attempted to come up with a program to incentivize new ADUs, and Eva's going to be speaking to that in a little bit, and hopefully, we can increase these numbers. That was part of the intent of these amendments as well, is recognizing with the very limited number of ADUs that we have created. Is recognizing with the very limited number of ADUs that we have created in the community. Is there a way that we can increase that? Part of that, I think, is with these, these changes. And then part of it is with probably some outreach, probably some incentives. And again, Eva's gonna cover that more broadly. So, but thank you for your comments on that.
Thank you.
My question, I'm going to assume that Eve is going to call this, but I had been interested in efforts to work with the homeowners that are building these to prioritize workforce housing. And I guess I also want to say my goal, we will have growth. They'll, you know, the population of Durango will increase, but my goal is hopefully the commuter population will decrease. So we will have been creating housing for that workforce. And while a small number right now, I do see that as housing that, that could be used. And I'm aware of people in town who do live in ADUs and have been here for many years. And it's what makes it affordable for them. So I appreciate your efforts. If Eva's not going to cover incentivizing. Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you. On that note, we have the recommendation. Can you pull that slide up again? I did too, I said, but perfect. So we, is there a motion based on the recommendation?
I'll move to approve the text amendments to chapters two, three, and seven of the land use and development code with the findings as stated in the June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two planning commission minutes and staff report and as discussed in this public hearing and direct the city attorney to prepare the enacting ordinance, adopting these text amendments and incorporate them for a first reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
I'll second. Is there any, is there any discussion? Hearing none. Let's have this vote.
Excuse me, Mayor Proten.
Yes.
Counselor Buell.
Yes.
Counselor Baxter.
Yes.
Yes.
And Mayor Noseworthy.
Yes. Great. Next, we go on to a quasi judicial hearing, a public hearing to consider the three springs crossing lots, three and four boundary adjustment.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Dan Armentano, again with community development. This is a pretty simple change. So I'll go through this fairly quickly. It's a simple boundary adjustment request for two vacant commercial parcels out at, out of the South Fork area. Both properties were created in twenty nineteen, so pre-recent subdivision. They're both within the South Fork Character District and are therefore subject to the master plan for that area. Total size of the transferred area, the change is about a quarter of an acre and both properties are under the same ownership at the moment. Here's a context map showing the two properties highlighted in red there. They're out on Wilson Gulch Drive up by the hospital just east, sorry, just west of the new Subaru dealership. And here's a zoomed in photo. So you can obviously see they're vacant. And the change will essentially, and you'll see this on the plat, but from this little notch in, this is lot four, will basically cut straight north, south and transfer that sliver to the property to the west there. You can see public improvements are in place. That was all done as part of the twenty nineteen subdivision. So here's the plat showing that change. The resulting lot sizes are roughly an acre for a lot three A and about an acre and a half for lot four A. I might've gotten my lot numbers mixed up on the last side, so I apologize if I did. But pretty minor change. As far as process by code, this is a minor subdivision. So it's reviewed by planning commission with your final approval. Most of the LEDC criteria don't really apply in this case because it's so simple. However, this does comply with the requirement to the South Fork master plan. And just to note, there's really no change to any future land uses or development potential with this proposal. So the planning commission reviewed this on June twenty-seventh. There was no public comment. There was very minimal discussion, no concerns to the commissioners, and they recommended approval on a five to zero vote. So to conclude, again, simple change aligns with the requirements for the area, won't detract from the future developability of these parcels.
Thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing for this discussion item. Is there anyone? There's no one who's signed up. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to provide public comment on this project? I'm not hearing from Nick or anyone handling video.
We, we have no one online who's, who's raising their hand.
Thank you. With that, I'll close the public comment and we can go to questions of Dan. Are there any questions or comments?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the three, three, three springs crossing lots, three and four boundary adjustment with the findings and conditions as discussed in this public hearing and outlined in the planning commission staff report.
I'll second. Is there any discussion? Let's have this vote. Yes.
Counselor Baxter.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Buell.
Yes.
And Mayor Noseworthy.
Yes. Next item, a public hearing to consider the three springs V one F two A re-subdivision of lots E one, E two and E five.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Dan Armentano. Again, this is another pretty simple minor subdivision out in the Three Springs area. This is going to turn three existing parcels into two. All three properties are in the urban core of Three Springs and are currently mixed use. They're all under the same ownership. And again, no proposed redevelopment or change to the parcels. Here's a context map. So, yeah, urban core of Three Springs. This is right on Mercato here. If you look a little bit more closely. So kind of the main business district here of Three Springs. The three parcels are the one twenty-five, one seventy-five, and then this unaddressed parcel, which mostly just contains a parking lot. This proposal is taking that parking lot parcel and splitting it in half, just continuing this property line straight to, I guess that's north, northwest. And then consolidating those two halves of the parking lot with one twenty-five and one seventy-five respectively. So in the end, it looks like this, which you can see kind of at the bottom of the plat here. Again, minor subdivision reviewed by planning commission and approved by you all. Pretty simple request, minimal applicability to LEDC criteria. This does comply with the three springs codes and standards. Staff's only comment was just the need to dedicate an access easement across that parking lot to preserve its functionality. Again, they're under the same ownership right now, but if there ever was a sale of either parcel, that could potentially create a conflict. So we're just asking for an easement and that can just be written in on the final plat once we get to that point. No public comment at planning commission. Again, minimal discussion and a five to zero recommendation of approval. So again, requested change aligns with the standards, new property line splits and existing parking lot. So if they dedicate that easement, that'll preserve the use of that parking lot and avoid future conflicts.
No one is raising their hand virtually, Nicholas?
No, Mayor, no one is.
Then we'll close the public hearing and open for questions from council or comments from council.
Once again, I'll make a motion to approve the three springs V one F two A re-subdivision of lots E one, E two and E five with the findings and conditions as discussed in this public hearing and outlined in the planning commission staff report.
I'll second. Any discussion? Let's have the vote.
Counselor Buell.
Yes.
Counselor Baxter.
Yes.
Counselor Bosman.
Yes.
Yes.
And Mayor Noseworthy.
Yes. Next item is eleven, excuse me, thirteen point one, general, or thirteen is general business items, and it's the overview of the new ADU incentive rebate program. Eva, welcome.
Good evening. Eva Henson, Housing Innovation Manager, and I'll be presenting an overview of a new ADU incentive rebate program I've created. Housing Innovation Division, we are responsible for creating, implementing, and administering community housing initiatives towards the goal of maintaining and enhancing the quality of life in Durango through the creation and support of housing development. The division leads the implementation of programs to accomplish the community's long-range housing policies as identified in the housing plan. Twenty twenty-two housing initiatives within the housing incentive program. The goal is to advance various initiatives, including ADU development, advanced housing-related code amendments related to ADUs, and create and develop ADU incentives. Those advancing initiatives to directly support the creation of housing units for the local population. The new program, ADUs for Locals Rebate Program, with a mission in mind of housing our workforce within, within the community by rewarding and offering rebates to Durango homeowners who commit to renting out their ADU to a local worker. The program will incentivize homeowners to build accessory units on their properties as part of the ongoing effort to create more housing opportunities. The new pilot program will have a goal of ten newly constructed ADUs by using the eighty thousand dollars from the already appropriated five hundred thousand dollars housing incentive program funds. The rebate will be a first come, first serve basis to eligible owners until the funds are depleted. The rebate is a flat amount of eight thousand dollars within the staff report that I provided. Staff evaluated some of those development fees and costs as well as the application. It ranged from about seven thousand dollars to about eleven thousand dollars. So eight thousand's kind of right in the middle, as well as rebate funds will be distributed as a one-time payment directly to the owner. Program criteria, really tried to simplify the program to achieve tangible results. The owner must rent an ADU to a local worker who works at least thirty-two hours a week for a business organization located in La Plata County boundaries. The tenant must reside as a primary residence. Lease term must be at least a minimum of six months. As well as owner must attest and sign notarized affidavit agreeing to the program terms for a minimum of two years. And then we'll be program monitoring on an annual basis that will continue to ensure compliance of the program. Wanted to provide a quick year-to-date glance of the five hundred, five hundred thousand dollar incentive program. I provided a quarterly update to council on the housing program in April, but I think just wanted to provide a quick snippet here of some of those monies that have been sort of appropriated or going to be used. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars specifically for financial support in exchange for a development of a, of ten long-term deed restricted units for local community workers. Seventy-five thousand dollars potentially through, I think, an RFP process, not to an exceed amount to engage professional service to revow the, the three springs development agreement and identifies ways to remove barriers to continued development in the Three Springs neighborhood and including expansion into Village Two. And as well for this new program, eighty thousand dollars for the incentive rebate, which will leave approximately ninety-five thousand to continue to look at infrastructure opportunities or other opportunities to increase our programs for the housing. As Dan also identified in his presentation, this aligns with the housing plan as well as the strategic plan. A few of those components to increase affordable and workforce inventory through a variety of mechanisms, prioritize density and infill development, support the production of a variety of housing types, and ensure land use and development code promote development of affordable housing by reviewing standards. And I welcome comments and questions.
Council, questions, comments, thoughts?
I was wondering why you're limiting this to new ADUs. There's a lot of ADUs in our community that aren't currently rented. And it seems like it would, you might be able to offer a lower incentive to have someone move into the rental market versus having that unit just sit there. So I'm wondering if that might not be one of, something to explore. It also has, well, it's already, it's already there. Let's use it. I also am concerned about the eight thousand dollars upfront. Given the documentation, I'm not certain how we ever get the money back if they don't follow the rules. I know that they say they'll pay it back if they sell it, for example. Where's the enforcement on that? How does that actually work? And if they only do it for one year and we paid them eight thousand dollars and they're, they refuse to pay us back. What's our, what's our enforcement issue? So I'd like to see some thought put to fifty fifty payment, say fifty percent upfront, fifty percent at completion of the contract, which is kind of standard operating procedure for contracts. You don't pay people for everything that they agree to perform until part of it, you know, it's been performed. And I'm concerned about enforcement. So I think that we need to envision, and it isn't just for this program, for example. I know we've been talking about deed restricted units. We've been talking about covenants. We've been talking about numerous other things that are going to take administration. So I think we need to also envision what we might need to do in additional staffing for your department, giving you some assistance to be able to make those programs work, to make sure that they're successful and that they achieve the goals that we want to, to achieve. So, and this is just one of those that I, that's come across our conversations that I can see that there's going to be a need for that. And, and if we, I think if we don't take that into account, we'll have programs out there that we can't guarantee or doing what we're trying to get them to do. And we can't enforce the rules if we, if you take it that way. So. But I, I would look at incentivizing current ADUs that are not currently being rented.
Yes. And, um, you know, certainly staff and I, you know, went back and forth on this quite a bit. I think if we, I think I wanted to start small scale first and focus on newly constructed and sort of track and see what best practices sort of learn from this, see where we can expand the program to existing. I think when we first started discussing existing, it started turning more into a rental subsidy type of a program or a conversion if you hadn't rented before and now you're going to start renting, or maybe you had been doing thirty days longer sort of bypassing, you know, short-term rental pieces and trying to capture long-term rentals. So we certainly did look at that. And I, I certainly would love to expand the program to, to do that. For the payment, that was another piece that we did discuss. I just need to probably work out some specifics with finance of what that might look like to make sure the program funding can continue to carry over. If we wanted to do, you know, an upfront half payment, ensure that you're compliant and then incentive for you to stay compliant and then make another payment, maybe year two.
Also the thing about enforcement, like if someone sells the unit, I mean, we're not putting a lien on their house because of this, but.
We would probably do more of a recorded, recorded affidavit, a testation document is what we've discussed, that it would come up during a title search to identify and notify hopefully the city if, if there was a change in hands.
Yeah, that doesn't have any legal teeth to it, though. That's more an informational situation, but I appreciate that.
I appreciate the update on this program, the rebate intention. I, I assume you follow directions from council and city staff, but I find this, when I look at this, it is, we're giving taxpayers money or somehow paid by taxpayers to, in this case, ten likely more wealthy people because they have a house already to build even more wealth by adding an ADU. And then we participate in eight thousand dollars to that group instead of helping the people that cannot afford a house or rent. The cost besides the, the gift of eight thousand dollars to an extremely small group of people to run the program, to enforce the requirements, I, I think we're making the whole world more complex instead of more simple. And in this case, it's small projects. In other cases, it's the fair share ordinance that's way too complex. And that is a resistance to adding housing, even though this would add housing, affordable units, maybe. I just think this is not a smart financial decision to go this route, even though the person that has the house and wants to add an ADU is probably very happy to tap into that eight thousand dollars. I would prefer to see a solution towards the people that need it, getting two housing. That's all I had. Nothing, no questions. Thank you for that.
When they're building an ADU,
When they're building an ADU, there's an impact fee assessed, right?
Correct.
And how much is that impact fee?
I think it depends if it's integrated or attached, detached. I might have to look at one of the planners.
No, I asked the question because I'm aware of a community member who wanted to build ADUs as a way of addressing housing in this community, and I think they were looking at eight to 10 as part of a development. But the impact fees were sufficient, I think it was close to $10,000 combined, maybe. They were sufficient enough, so, so much that even though they had the resources to do this, it was a tipping point for them. So, you know, I'm sensitive to the, the difference between subsidizing and incentivizing, and I'm trying to strike that balance of how we can get these landlords to possibly go to that six-month and charge a rent that's 35, 33% of the workforce wage. And I'm curious how you're going to get that, the rental control as well.
Um, I've thought about that. You know, I did think about, you know, could we have some strings attached to this program where there's a commitment to have a reduced rental rate? Again, I think it's incentivizing as well as subsidizing potentially with that reduced rental rate. Again, commitment with a lease, you could, you know, try and get verification and execution. I think I had to think more about how to get people into the program, how to administer that, and how many folks would we be bringing in to rent? I think the other piece that, that staff and I looked at was the CHAFA rental rates. And so those have changed in 2022, and so on a studio, those are about 1350 with a CHAFA rental rate of an 80% or 100% AMI household. For a one-bedroom, that increases to over 1,500. And so we tried to capture some information from the survey. Again, we didn't get as many results as we had hoped, but most of those survey results that we did get from the ADU owners identified that they were charging less than that. And so I had to try and find a balance with what this program, small-scale pilot, might look like, and how could I look at expanding the housing division with rental, increasing our rental inventory, could we help subsidize that with commitment to do reduced rental rate? And I would love to come back to council with a different program that would address some of those.
Thank you. Other thoughts?
I appreciate like the creativity and trying to incentivize people to build. And the biggest thing for me is looking at the ADU rents, where over half of them are under $1,000 a month. And so I understand that balance and trying to find, you know, incentivizing versus, you know, giving money away. But if it's going to incentivize people to build more ADUs that have rents that are under $1,000 a month potentially, I, I'm on board, and I think that it's, you know, we're not spending hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's $80,000 and to like see, you know, how it goes and evaluate the program. I don't think it's a bad start, and I don't think it's a bad way to kind of gauge if it's enough to incentivize even, like, will we see a big uptick? Or if it's not enough to incentivize, or I, yeah, I just, I feel like it's smart to have, you know, a little infill, less, you know, people commuting from Three Springs and Power Places away, potentially. I don't know.
Well, and the other piece too, through the attestation document, you know, we would be capturing employment verification, so we'd get right, hands-on. We also would get executed leases, so we would be able to evaluate and track what are they charging in rent and what happened year two as well. Again, for reporting purposes, how can we enhance the program? Where do we need to make tweaks or changes? And just to capture some more data that we don't have currently on our ADUs.
Eva, I have two questions. Would you consider modifying, and it's not, I'm not making the recommendation, I'm just curious if you, you would even think about it, modifying to include a certain portion for existing ADUs that where you're going to work to really get those filled with workforce housing occupants or, or, and then, and then the new, and then also in the sense of, would you, is there any merit in trying to work with those people who have ADUs that we know are not registered and they're, what you might call illegal? Is there any way to incentivize that registration of those units?
Yes, that is one thing that we considered. So helping define, I think, and clarify that within the program criteria, who's eligible? Who's eligible to apply? And so giving a definition on, is it just newly constructed? I think we were also encompassing legalizing units to help incentivize that in that definition. It just, I don't think I clarified that on the form necessarily. And yes, I would be open to, you know, looking a little bit more at existing units and just need to kind of get a little more deeper dive into what that might entail. And I might have to increase the program goal. We might get more interest if we're going to open that up to existing units.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry. I just, it, it's these small steps. And it's the, the multitude of the small steps that, that I think is ultimately going to help us get to where we need to get and get us closer towards our, our goals. Every time I talk to someone, you know, and we all know that that's the issue is workforce, a very critically important issue is workforce housing. I've seen our housing department do some really creative programs that communities across the state are contacting us and asking us what we're doing and how are you doing that ADU program? How are you doing your short-term rentals? And so, you know, I, I think that sometimes it takes thinking outside of the box and trying for a pretty small amount of money. Here we can gauge and, and see what happens over a period of time, see how the enforcement is. And so I think, I think it's, I think it's movement forward, but in the right direction. I want to suggest that you may need to, in measurement of success of this program, you may need to move that measurement off in the future a little bit, because right now we're in a very challenging building environment, and the cost of supplies and the cost of labor, if you can get anybody to do anything, is incredibly challenging. So I would, you know, I think it would not benefit anyone to, to say next year there'd only been two units that this wasn't successful. I think we need to be aware of the environment that we're currently living in. So, so I just wanted to put that out there so that we're not overly judgmental necessarily about how well this might be working.
And I would like to add that with $95,000 remaining in your pot of money to work with, I, I think that I, as one counselor, would welcome a discussion of what you might, what additional resources you might be needing. You don't want to limit your ability to take small and large steps and be creative, because, oh my goodness, I only have this much left.
And I think that begs the question of, so this was ARPA funds, if I'm correct, about setting up the housing division, which are one-time upfront monies, and it, it really just illuminates that council needs to be having a discussion of a dedicated funding stream for housing.
Thank you.
Just not tonight.
Yeah.
Actually, I was going to turn to the city manager and say, you know, we have talked about that for the, and to the public. We've been talking about the need for a dedicated funding source, and it is on a future agenda, I do believe.
Yes, as I think it's one of the ones, uh, well, as part of our 2005 sales tax discussion, what other possible release that we could look at using that. So it's definitely on the forefront.
Let's see. Council reports and actions. Each council member has an opportunity to report on meetings recently attended and topics not otherwise covered on the agenda. Boards and commission liaison reports. I believe we've had the Parks and Rec, the Natural Lands. The IAB did not meet, so do we have an update on those two or any others? Could be Chamber, could be RHA, the Alliance, any other meetings?
I, I can just go over the Parks Advisory Board meeting from July 13th. It was an included discussion about pickleball courts, the e-bike subcommittee, subcommittee. Staff reports included how boards and commissions function, which was the meeting today. And then there was the recreation program participation presentation, which was quite good. Some programs have large waitlists, and that is primarily due to staff shortages. And examples are gymnastics, game time, swim lessons. And then the, the 32nd Street Crossing, the new Bridge and Tunnel Underpass. Ribbon Cunning will take place probably, I think it was August 23rd. So that would be a nice project to wrap up. That's, that's about all I had. Future discussions will include the Trail at Horse Gulch, Whitewater Park, Defibrillator, and Tremble Lane River Access.
You know, I just have something short. I, I was just, I received just, it's not on a meeting, but just some correspondence that I received from residents that I wanted to just report on. I received one very thankful appreciation for staff's patrolling on the river trail near the skateboard park. Felt the resident felt that they were seeing, you know, an increased in level of patrols and also just a potentially better environment, and they were sending their appreciation. I wanted to share that with council. I think I shared the voicemail with you, Jose. And, and that was nice. It's nice to receive positive feedback, and also an email and phone call from another resident who was very thankful about the measures that staff proactively took to increase safety on Third Avenue. And despite the loss of parking places, 10 parking places, just the proactive steps to, for safety was appreciated by this person who lived on Third. So, thank you.
Any other updates?
So Natural Lands Board, they took a tour of the Durango Mesa Park area, and we had Marty Poole do a sustainability program presentation, which was, had very interesting discussions. Also, so the e-bike subcommittee, there was a study session summary, and I believe that there will be a recommendation coming from the Natural Lands Board to pursue evaluating the easement issues with conservation easements for e-bike use in the Horse Gulch area, and not for other areas at this time, but to approach those first. Then we had a discussion, which we started last month, about the impact on the natural lands of Purple Cliffs closing and the unhoused, and their concerns about how that impact might be mitigated, since they're kind of supposed to be here to recommend to us how to manage those lands. So the agreement was that after council, it had a few more discussions, so at our next meeting, they would decide what, if anything, they wanted to suggest or offer help for, or what have you. Also, one of the things that's been coming up a lot lately, as we all know, is, is dog parks and dog off-leash in our open space and other areas. So the Natural Lands Board has started a discussion on a program for off-leash and voice-controlled dogs. One of the, the one that they looked at initially is the Boulder's Voice and Sight Tag Program for Dogs, which is very, very, very intricate. It's amazing. It's not simple. So, but they're looking at, you know, is this something we want to do? Is it something we want to do for just a specific area? How do we want to handle that so that our residents can have dogs off-leash and not negative impact, impact the entire community, but just have, have positive impacts in certain areas? So that was, to me, very interesting. The RHA is, right now, the hiring committee is in the process of evaluating, which it was done on, what's today, Tuesday? That was done yesterday. Evaluating the applicants for the executive interim executive director position for the RHA and determining whether to move any of them on to board interviews. So we will be doing interviews early next week of two of the four candidates that came forward, maybe it's two of five. And the position is open until filled, so we're challenged because the board intentionally decided to pay a very robust salary for this position, anticipating that the decision, anticipating that the applicant pool would consist of people who had done this before, who actually had experience and would know what direction to go and how to go and how to make it happen in a timely manner and in an efficient and effective way. And because of the input that we had had from other communities who were trying to hire the same person as we were trying to hire essentially, and their offers were fairly robust also, but they weren't even getting any applicants. That's why we decided to try it with a little bit accelerated salary. Not a single one of these candidates meets the minimum requirements. So I think it's an industry-wide problem, given what we've heard from other communities about trying to find regional housing authority-type directors or even housing directors within the municipality. So I don't, I'm not certain. I know the next steps are, we're doing interviews and we're hoping to receive some more qualified applicants, but I, I, you know, honestly don't know if that's going to happen. So I don't know what the impact then is. I don't know what the board's discussion will be after that. But I wanted you to know that unfortunately, you know, we had originally had a contract not in place, but almost in place with a joint consulting firm that was going to do this, because they had the experience. They'd done it before. They knew how to make this happen, and that fell apart through some unfortunate circumstances. So I'm not certain how this is going to work out at this point, just FYI.
Does anyone have council, uh, on council have a response immediately to Councilor Baxter's comments about the RHA? And I guess there would, or questions about it, yes? That's a, a new information. Perhaps at the next meeting under new business, if I, I'll try to make a note. Perhaps we can discuss whether or not there's an interest in getting a report from the RHA of what's been accomplished this past year.
That's, that's a good idea. And additionally, just so you know, to the intergovernmental agreement that would specify roles and responsibilities as well as contributions is on its way. It's not complete yet. The county attorney is working on that. And it would propose a three-year contribution plan, of which, of course, we could only commit to one year at a time. But personally, I'm, I'm, and I'm saying this because I want to be completely transparent about what's going on here. I'm concerned because without an ED in place and a plan and projects and a process, I don't, I'm challenged by the contribution, the dollar contribution idea. I, I think it's kind of the chicken before the egg. On the other hand, if you don't have an IGA in place with financial contributions, it's hard to hire someone because there's no certainty for their job. So this is, this is turning out to be more complex than originally, and you know, we had a great path forward and it disappeared. So I'm, for me, this is really challenging.
So I appreciate the heads up, and I'm going to suggest that we bring it up under new business to see if council would like, how they'd like to receive the appropriate information and the budgetary requests. We'll do that under new business at the next study session. Anything else to update or report? On that note, it's been nine-plus hours for this council. Thank you.